Lord, kingdom come and your will be done in this place as it is in heaven. Lord, through your holy spirit, lead our mayor and this council board. Each public servant represented here today. May your protection be over our police chief and our fire chief, the guardians of our city, over every citizen represented here in this place and every family in our community. Lord, in a divisive time of our country, we pray that the city of Los Banos be the light in the darkness. Thank you for this opportunity that you have of allowing us to gather here today. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get a roll call, please? Here, sorry. All right. Item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Have a motion, Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item five, presentations. I get to go mobile. All right. I'm still convinced this is the coolest part of the job. Just gonna point that out. All right. Can I have Sergeant Jesus Pares come on up? And I've known Jesus for many years, so this feels like totally informal. I'm just gonna pretend the rest of you aren't here, but... So Sergeant Pares, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service at the city of Los Banos for being named employee of the month for July 2023, congratulations. And do any members of the family want to come up and take a photo? I'm sure we do. Please do so. Especially with our public service people, again, the employee of the month, but really it's the family that does a lot of the heavy lifting, so thank you. All right, thank you. And then is Jennifer here? Yes? Oh? She tried to hide for a second. Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer Loa?
Yes.
All right. So Jennifer Loa, homeless outreach coordinator, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banos for being named employee of the month, August 2023, congratulations. And do you have anyone here with you? Wants to take photos? Okay, all right. Well, you're stuck with me then, so that's all right. All right, thank you. All right. This time we'll move into item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted in the council chamber information table. At this time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward and again, just to silence or turn off your cell phones.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard. I've read our agenda and our consent agenda. I've noticed some might have legal or procedural or budgetary challenges that require public discussion, debate, or open review. Please honor our request to pull these items for discussion on a separate vote or possible actions. I've done some research. I've gotten some of the answers for your items that are on your consent agenda, but I still have questions on a few of them. The first one is item E. Why would we take away a benefit from our new or internal promotions in our police department, fire department, or public works? I don't understand why. Item number I, why have we pulled out of something that was set in 2017 and funded, the pathway to Merced College? Item K, change order in the amount of $886,000. This is more than an oops, the price of tar went up. The other one is item N. Does this not require a change in the city ordinances for outside dining? I've provided you an article about consent agendas. It matches conversations I've had with other cities in regards to what qualifies as something for a consent agenda. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, honorable council members. It's nice to see you all. My name is Shawn Marshall, and I'm here tonight to introduce myself as the new chief executive officer of Peninsula Clean Energy. We are your local energy provider since April of 2022. I am joined tonight by Donna Coulson, who is our board vice chairwoman. We came down today and had a very productive meeting. Thank you, Mayor Yanez and City Manager Panero. Thought it was very constructive. We answered a number of questions. I am looking forward to coming back for a fuller briefing before the council. For now, I'll just say hello. Nice to see many of you. And let you know that at the moment, Los Banos customers are enjoying a minimum 5% discount on electric generation. Right now, actually, the vast majority of your residential and business customers are at 9.6% discounted off of PG&E's generation rates. I think that's a very important fact to know because dollars matter. I also want to report out that we have invested nearly $2 million in your first 14 months of service, and that includes things like solar projects on the wastewater treatment, the community center. We've done numerous sponsorships. We have a number of homeowners that have benefited from low-income programs related to home upgrades, heat pump, water heaters, e-bikes, all kinds of different things. So as I said, I'll have more to say. Look forward to coming back, but just want to say hello and thanks for having us. Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Cristhian Santos here, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. Just wanted to give a brief update. Last month Congressman Duarte participated in an important gathering aimed at addressing the ongoing challenges of forest and wildfire mismanagement in the United States. The field tour and hearing organized by the Western Caucus and the House Natural Resources Committee took place in Yosemite. And now, Los Banos may be far from the Sierras, but Sierra wildfire smoke still poses a severe health risk to Valley families, and the economic impact of these natural disasters hurts every Californian. Congressman Duarte, who advocates for responsible environmental stewardship, joined a hearing centered on the delicate balance between preserving our natural landscapes and protecting our communities and economies from the devastating impacts of uncontrolled wildfires. In a hearing, the congressman stated that "we may be the generation to destroy the giant sequoias, trees from the time of Christ, simply because of our refusal to build firebreaks and thin fuels." We are already a generation that has turned millions of acres of national forests into moonscapes due to our lack of fuel thinning in our management policy. Our kids and our grandkids deserve a forest management policy that will both preserve our natural landscapes, protect our economies, and protect our health and our communities. The congressman in our office also recently had the opportunity to join the delegation from Merced County Association of Governments to advocate for vital quality-of-life improving Merced County infrastructure projects with Caltrans Director Tony Tavares at Castle. I'd also like to take some time to thank the several residents of Los Banos who made it out to our At Water Town Hall last Tuesday. I know it was a bit of a drive, but we did have quite a few there. We had an overflow, standing-room-only crowd of about 150 people. It was a very spirited but civil discussion that ranged on a number of issues, from immigration to water and budget negotiations as well. And I look forward to working with Mayor Yanez, City Manager Josh Panero, and other members of the city council and city government to hopefully bring a West Side Town Hall and secure date right here in Los Banos. That is something I can say our office is prioritizing, and would love to work with you on securing a date and appropriate venue so that we could accommodate a crowd that hopefully is even bigger, so that we can have the opportunity for constituents to hear from their congressman. And again, on Monday, it is going to be the 22nd anniversary of 9/11, so we ask, hopefully everyone can take a moment to pray and keep our first responders and our troops in their thoughts and never forget. So thank you for your time for this report.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Yanez for meeting with me the other day to discuss the progress on the animal shelter, which unfortunately is moving rather slowly. However, hopefully it is moving nonetheless. The funds have been budgeted for some time now, and the public is interested to see some progress, or at least hear about it. When questions are asked about the shelter, it's because we are excited to know that the animals of Los Banos and their owners will be served so much better in the future than they have been in the past. It's not intended to stir the pot or cause an uproar, and I hope no one takes it that way. We simply want to be informed along the way. I have asked for and will continue to ask for transparency going forward in the way of public meetings where we can engage in a question-and-answer format, and the public can be involved in the decision-making process. It is public tax, money being spent after all. I encourage everyone hearing this tonight to take a friend or neighbor out to the animal shelter, so you might become more involved in having a say about what the next shelter might look like and how it might function. We haven't had a new shelter for several decades and may not get another one for several more decades, if ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to start off by addressing a rhetorical question raised by Councilmember Louis at the last council meeting. She asked, "Maybe I'm just stupid." Well, council member, you're not. You're just the opposite, and ARPA is not a confusing program. It's one of the most straightforward, easy-to-understand federal programs there is. Every bit of confusion surrounding ARPA has been created by the city to prevent transparency and accountability for how they've allocated funds. The Treasury has provided over 400 pages of regulation on how funds can and cannot be spent, so there's no reason for any confusion. The city has allocated funds in a way that is explicitly not allowed based on the Treasury's written regulations, and now some members of the council are trying to provide cover for their wrongdoing. I also want to be clear that I'm not merely talking about a lack of transparency. I'm talking about deliberately misleading the public to discourage business owners from applying for funds they were eligible for under guidelines which still haven't been published. The guidelines in this advertisement that was published were not followed. These guidelines are far more restrictive than the ones used. The guidelines in this application that was given to business owners were not followed. Those guidelines are far more restrictive than the ones actually used. I've spoken to numerous business owners in town that did not apply because they did not qualify based on the public guidelines the city published. Although they do qualify based on the private guidelines the city used to approve this list of grant awards. Based on the loopholes in the Treasury regulations they used to approve certain applications, every business in downtown Los Banos was eligible for $25,000 whether they were impacted by COVID or not, but they chose to disclose that information to only a select group of people while discouraging the rest of the public from applying. Until the city publishes the scoring system they use, they cannot say they are not discriminating against some businesses and favoring others. When you look at this list of grant recipients, you can see within 10 seconds why they don't want the public to see their scoring system. At the last meeting, it was stated that a report on this program would be premature because the city may have money coming back to them from businesses that don't comply and that a letter would soon be sent to businesses for reporting purposes. First, I wanted to put it on record that I have not received that letter yet, so I do not believe a report will be coming in the timeline provided at the last meeting. Second, just like the city can recoup funds from businesses, the Treasury can recoup funds from the city for not following regulations. The disregard for Treasury regulations is creating a significant financial risk for the city and is putting millions of dollars at risk because this is not the only program that isn't following ARPA regulations. The city making the public wait for an explanation of the scoring system when we've already been waiting for nine months is unreasonable. I'm again asking for a report at the next city council meeting that includes an explanation of the scoring system, the scores each business received, the amount of each individual grant award, the date of initial application, the date of termination was made, and the date the check was written. This is all public information bound by the California Public Records Act, and there's no reason it can't be included in the agenda packet except for certain departments of the city and some members of the council wanting to keep the truth from the public.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Roy Todd, representing the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce, tonight, kind of giving the council and others an update on some of the things going on within the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for your ongoing support of the chamber. And with that being said, our next event's going to be September 16th, which will be the Fall Street Fair. In doubt, it'll be on Main Street, Sixth Street. Along with that will be the Rotary, which is also a chamber member. Their pancake breakfast will take place at the same time, and that's always a good event, and it's one place where you can get a square meal on a round paper plate. Also, Central California Blood Center, Blood Drive will take place during the fair. The Blood Mobile will be attending the Fall Fair, as I said. Food booths, craft vendors, live entertainment will all be a part of it. Spaces are still available. If you would like to join as a craft vendor, contact the chamber office or find the application online at losbanos.com. Another thing that we're real excited about is we've been invited to participate in being one of the sponsors of the Los Banos Small Business Expo. That'll be Thursday, October 12th, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. At the community center, registration is open for all small businesses to attend. Just contact the chamber office or visit the chamber page on our ever-improving website, and this is a free event to all participants. I feel something like that, you know, if a business gets even one or two good ideas out of that that they can take and run with is worth the investment in time. Nobody succeeds alone, really. Halloween Trunk or Treat will be on October 27th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Our first annual one was last year, and we're building on the success of that. It was an absolute sellout of Main Street with a very great crowd involved, and it was really great to see all of the families and kids come out, especially post-pandemic kind of thing. It was kind of like the first thing that was really going on that really made it look like, you know, maybe we're turning the corner here. The idea behind that is the people passing out the candy, the community members are passing out the candy, they just kind of turn backwards. They have the trunks, it's again on Main Street, have their trunks facing, they decorate their trunks up in Halloween kind of garb, and then all the kids go by, and then some of the kids were about my height, and they were asking for candy too, but anyway, that's how that goes, right? So again, there's applications on the chamber page that you can find on our website. The Chamber Christmas Parade will take place on December 2nd. That'll be from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Downtown Sixth Street Parade theme is Christmas and Candyland. Christmas tree lighting at Henry Miller Plaza with the award ceremony taking place there and then. Food booths, craft vendors, live entertainment. Again, there's applications to be involved with that on the chamber page. Then exciting news, basically kind of talks to some of the growth. We have new chamber members that I'd like to report. San Joaquin Valley Access Control, Clean Code LLC, Brian James Realty, Agent Miguel Munoz with Brian James Realty, Age-Defying Metaspa, which I'm going to go visit later, Marisol Imports, Central California Legal Services, and Delicioso, Baked With Love.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
Gotcha, all right. Then finally Ribbon Cutting, Azul Rustica, September 21st will take place. Be hosting that ribbon cutting. We hope to invite, have the city council and so forth be there to kick them off on a good start. Remind you that we have mixers at the end of every month. We just finished up one at the end of August with PMC Realty. It was really well attended. We really appreciate Josh being there, and...
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, just so you can know, the Elks are having their flamingo flocking, and we are enjoying, and everyone's enjoying, the flamingos that are in people's yards. Children enjoy it, and even pass through by individuals. Each flock is individually... Each flock is individually custom-made, and we try to work with who's going to get flogged to custom-make their little flock. Well, October 27th is Truck Trunk Retreat, and the city has, on the 29th, they have their Halloween event. There is a Halloween event for pets, and that's going to be Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 to noon. We'll have booths there. All the booths will be animal-related booths, and we are actually raising money for the animal shelter. The pets, the individuals' pets that are there. We want to help comfort them, feed them, and so we are gathering food, things that the animal shelter may need for the animals. You could always look up our local Elks Lodge or call the Elks Lodge if you guys need information. One of the final things I'd like to discuss is the Elks Drug Awareness Program. We do have an essay, poster, and video contest coming up, and we are also participating. I don't want to preach too much. I want to keep this brief. We will be at the street fair, us Elks, and we also have a special guest that will be coming. He is a elk, and he is actually Elroy the Elk, and he's going to be there for the children between 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so the children can come take a picture of Elroy, the drug awareness elk. And we have him, we have him here. Oh, there we go, and he's waving. Come on over. Come say hello. Let me get out of your way. We have a wonderful youth volunteer. Do you just want to wave to the council? Yeah? You want to wave to the police chief? Do you want to do any dancing? Excellent, excellent. Did you want to, what do you think about children doing drugs? Is it a thumb down? Thumb down. Why don't you face that to the police chief and let him know what you feel? Thumbs down. Thank you. So he'll be there at the street fair, and we want to thank the chamber for having us there. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kami Avalar. I live on Pitzer Way. Want to update you on the homeless behind my house on the rail trail. Same, same thing. My husband did actually walk... My husband did actually walk down the rail trail last week, and he said, basically, you would need boots to keep from getting any needles stuck in you. He says the amount of needles that were on the ground were obscene. And I know the city cleans it, but I don't think you, you have to clean it on a daily basis to keep up with what's going on back there. Noise, still the same thing, noise. The cars don't get down anymore, but they've got motorcycles and minibikes and generators and music. And I accidentally left my window open last night to my bedroom and had to get up in the middle of the night to close it because of the noise. So I don't get to enjoy the nice breeze. I get to keep my windows closed every night and have my air conditioning running because that's the only way I can keep my house cool because of what's going on behind me. I do drive around, and I scope out various places where I think they'd be better suited than right behind our neighborhood. So I will bring that list to you, and maybe we can look at putting them somewhere else. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city staff, fellow residents, good evening. I want to take this opportunity to read a little excerpt from the Brown Act, Purpose and Scope. And I read, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist in remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created, specifically what the city council is doing. Over and over again, they are withholding, they are depriving, and they are censoring information which is essential for the public to know." Again, this is taxpayer money. Folks have worked hard, long and hard, for this taxpayer money, and it's your responsibility to make the information available to them or to us so that we may be informed as to decisions and know what each and every council member has decided and why they're voting for these topics. For example, we have in today's agenda items, the consent agenda items, we have new business, we have several million dollars in expenditures, and it's on the consent agenda. We need to have a public, the ability to engage with you and find out why these are happening. Maybe they're great ideas, maybe they're not. But again, you cannot subvert the world of people by making these decisions. And this is one thing that's interesting, is that you have this new information, all these expenditures, and you're going to come here and you're going to vote on it. Where was the discussion? This discussion happened behind closed doors? This discussion happened in a meeting by serial, which is again a violation of the Brown Act? How did you all come to the agreement on these items without having any discussion on it? So again, it's very serious questions on this. And one thing that's a question is, are we spending taxpayer money on areas or projects that the responsibility of the developers? It seems as though we are. Also, we have a dictate, it seems, that only certain council members or a certain council member is not allowed to speak with the city staff. And that city staff is directed to then report any contact with that specific council member to the city manager. If one city council person has the information, all the city council members should have the same information and the same access to that information and to those individuals. These folks are resident experts in their fields. They were selected and appointed and employed to provide their expertise. Also, city council members are asking questions on behalf of their constituents. And by denying that access, you are denying access to those constituents, which again is problematic. I ask you to, again, understand what your roles, your duties, and your responsibilities are. Just because, just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should. We're going down the wrong path, gentlemen. We're going down the wrong path because we are violating tenants which are found in our constitution, the federal constitution, and our state constitution, and specifically in the Brown Act. They're meant to assure, help assure, that the city taxpayer money is spent appropriately and that there's interchange with the taxpayers before decisions are made. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? No? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public forum. And we'll move on to item seven, consideration of approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Rowent numbers 240153 through 240809 in the amount of $7,561,809.58. Minutes for the July 19th, 2023 city council meeting. Minutes for the August 2nd, 2023 city council meeting. Measure H Committee Financial Update. City Council Resolution Number 6678, approving an amendment to Division 1, General of the City's Policy and Procedures Manual, to add language regarding at-will employees as it pertains to middle manager positions. City Council Resolution Number 6679, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the City of Los Banos and the Central California Irrigation District regarding the Crest Hills sanitary sewer line. City Council Resolution Number 6680, authorizing the city manager to execute an out-of-boundary service agreement with Hostetler Ranches LLC located at 15054 Badger Flat Road upon local agency formation commission approval. City Council Resolution Number 6681, authorizing the city manager to issue purchase orders for equipment and vehicles through the cooperative procurement contract with Sourcewell for the Public Works Department. City Council Resolution Number 6682, declaring its intent to no longer pursue the Pacheco Boulevard SR152 Regional Path Project. City Council Resolution Number 6683, authorizing the Public Works Director/City Engineer to execute change order number five to the contract with ProGroup Painting for exterior painting of the Los Banos Community Center and amend the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget by increasing the appropriation amount in the Recreation Account 10451240205 in the amount of $74,000. City Council Resolution Number 6684, authorizing the Public Works Director/City Engineer to execute change order number two to the contract with United Pavement Maintenance, Inc., for the rehabilitation of Birch Avenue and G Street in the amount of $885,760.56. City Council Resolution Number 6685, authorizing the Public Works Director/City Engineer to sign program supplement agreement number 105160F15 and related documents for the CMAT Grant, CML 516031, for preliminary engineering and ride-of-way phase with Caltrans for the Pioneer Road and Ortigo Lider intersection project. City Council Resolution Number 6686, approving and adopting final track map number 202101, Quell Meadows Villages at Stone Creek V Large Lot, generally located within the area bounded by Highway 152 to the north, Future Pioneer Road to the west, Prairie Springs Drive to the east, and Cardozo Road to the south, RODI Development, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6687, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between the City of Los Banos and the Bad Boys for Life LLC, DBA Jams 209, for the property located at 516, 518, and 520 I Street. City Council Resolution Number 6688, authorizing a road of construction contract to Redstone Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,145,345, with a 10% contingency in the amount of $113,535 for the construction of the Eastern Application Field Irrigation Piping Replacement Project and adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year 2023/24 as it pertains to the wastewater treatment fund. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Thank you. And I understand that our city staff have requested item J be removed from the, from the agenda. Remove for good. Yeah. All right. Do I have any members of the council requesting to move any of these items for discussion? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'd like to move item D, E, G, I, and N.
All right. Can you say those one more time? I'm sorry.
D as in David.
Mm-hmm.
E as in Edward. G as in George. I as in Ida. N as in Nancy.
All right. Any, anyone else? Any others? All right. So let's start with D. Measure H Committee Financial Update. Finance Director.
Let's see. Sorry. Met with, for, there was a first meeting with the Measure H Committee in quite some time on August 17th. Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, it's on. I'll lean forward. Basically, there was a lot of just administrative stuff explained to the committee, the bylaws, what the requirements were. We talked through logistically that we'd be meeting twice a year, that, that we'd be meeting prior to the budget approval and then either probably in November when the fiscal year is closed and after the audit has gone through, that we would be bringing a performance, annual performance report to them. In the meantime, we discussed, I sent a financial summary of all of the expenditures, actually revenue and expenditure summaries since in the inception of Measure H, and highlighted the, the project expenditures from inception till, till now, well, till last fiscal year. So also included in the report, the approved budget expenditures for '23, '24. So basically, there were, I think there were two individuals that had never been on a committee and then three, no, three people that had never been on a committee and two that have been regularly on committees. One that has been on the committee for a while. So we just basically, it was, it was a fairly informal meeting. It was strictly informational, so there, there was no recommendations to bring to council. But we, when we start meeting prior to the budget, there will be a recommendation that will be brought to council regarding measure expenditures. And then the annual report will be very similar to what we bring for Measure P. So we'll give any, it'll highlight any of the information that was for the last fiscal year. We, we adjourned the meeting with, with, without any specific dates for the meeting, but I will be sending dates to the committee members to make those regular meeting dates. So this was considered a special meeting, but from going forward, that we will put on calendar these as regular meetings of, of the committee.
Councilmember Lewis, do you have a specific question?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the report and update. We did have a corrected copy of that report on the dais today, so is there something in this report that's different than what was in the packet?
Um, no. Okay. Oh, yes. I, I, there was.
When we were looking through the packet earlier today, we discovered that the back page of his staff report wasn't copied correctly. So.
It was two-sided.
Yeah. It was this two-sided staff report that didn't get copied correctly. And so we, we copied it and sent it out by email earlier today where it says, I think it says 54A. Or what does it say? It says 29, and then 29A was left out of the packet, and we corrected that earlier this morning.
And that's on the back page?
It says corrected item on 29, and then 29A was excluded from the paper packet.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that. Are you talking about the last page?
No. Page two. The two, let me see the front of your packet of that agenda item. Flip it over. That first page, it should say 29A. In the corner, that page was not included in the packet. That whole page. So it was a clerical error.
So, so that, that page just discussed some of the bylaws that, that were explained to the committee. And I, I had had that staff report double-sided so that when I submitted it to the clerk.
We didn't catch it until this morning.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else on that, on item D?
That was it. I basically needed to know what the corrected item was.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving on to E. And for this, we'll go to our Human Resources Director.
Do you have any questions, or would you like me just to present it?
His duties. And I'm concerned as to why we're making these levels of positions at-will workers, and how is that going to affect anyone wanting to promote in our city from a position that's coded where they have some sense of safety?
Currently, our directors are at-will positions. These positions that we have listed here, we also would like those to be at-will positions. It's a natural progression. We want folks to develop and grow within the city, to continue to move up, and this will help them understand what the expectation is as they continue to grow up in the organization that the director positions are at-will, and these other positions will be following that as well.
Okay. So other than these that are listed here, you have plans for other positions to become at-will?
At the moment, these are the positions that were discussed.
I understand that. But then I, I thought I heard you say that there were plans for other positions in the future.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. And I misunderstood you. Well, and, and there was one other thing in here. In the last paragraph of the first page, it indicated a tool, you know, that, one tool to be used, and this was also to institute employment at the pleasure of the department head and/or city manager, and then listing all the positions that are on here. But in the resolution, it doesn't include the department head. So is there a reason why the department head was left out?
The departments are already currently at-will positioned, so is there any specific reason why that is?
I guess, you know, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but it sounded to me like it would be either/or the department head or the city manager making a decision about at-will employment and perhaps whether or not this, a person might be terminated. Am I misunderstanding that?
The direction is not in regards to be terminated. The direction of this is going to be the subject. be the subject of their employment and they will be an at-will employment, so these are the positions that we're presenting to make them at-will employment.
Okay, well, um, I, I talked to a few cities, and one of the things that I was able to find out is that this is not a practice in other cities, and, and some, you know, their department heads are at-will, and a lot of them, they aren't, um, but I, this disturbs me to see that, uh, we're gonna take our mid-management and even some supervisory positions and make them at-will, and then in the correction of, um, of the language within the city now, um, people who may promote or, uh, I, this would be mostly promotional people who are promoted into another position from where they are, um, if that employee doesn't work out, then they cannot, uh, go back down to their previous position. Um, you know, sometimes people, people are very good employees in the position that they're in, and they want the opportunity to promote, but maybe it doesn't quite work out, that, you know, they're a, a, a good employee in that position, but it doesn't mean that they're not a good employee within the city, and to take away the right of a employee to not, um, go back down to a previous, previous position that they held, uh, if it's open, to me, it's basically cruel. Uh, so that whole paragraph, uh, has been stricken from our current ordinance which says, "A city employee who promotes into an at-will department head position and is then terminated as a result of unsatisfactory performance shall be el, shall be, uh, this is what it used to be, shall be eligible to return to his or her former position if the position is vacant at the time the employee is terminated. If the employee's former position is not vacant, then the employee is terminated, uh, if the, if the employee's former position is not vacant when the employee is terminated, then the employee shall have the right to return to any position within the city." So that's been taken out, which tells me the employee, uh, doesn't have the opportunity to return to any position. Um, I wouldn't want to promote with this hanging on my head. I'm sure some employees do wanna promote, but to lose that safety and to restrict good employees from moving up for fear of the fact that they might lose their job, um, to me is unconscionable. We only had, we, we started this with a, two ma, uh, city managers ago, uh, to let department heads be at-will employees, but I never thought it would get to this position where other levels of our employment, uh, employees, uh, within our city would have to be subject to this. Um, and I'm very concerned that it might go deeper than just what we see on this list. So I, I certainly don't support this, I, I just can't support it, um, and I, I think this is, for, for a city such as Los Manos, that this is a really negative thing that we're doing. Uh, it really inhibits people, our personnel, from wanting to advance in Los Manos and to, and to build a career ladder for themselves. Um, I don't think this has anything to do, uh, with them, you know, wanting to do their job. I think this is more about a control issue within our city, and, and I can't support this. I'm sure the rest of the council may, I don't know if there's anybody else who is not for this, but this certainly is quite a surprise to me that we would do this to the employees within the city of Los Manos. Um, it's, it's directed at some of the most important people that, that we have, um, which is our, uh, first responders, our police and our fire, and even in the, the public works and in our recreation department. We have hard-working employees, and, and I just can't see doing this to them, and that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm in support of this, and I wish we can do it, uh, citywide for all employees. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know any business out there where they don't have control over hiring and firing employees, especially ones that, um, just kinda milk the retirement clock. We have some employees that are just here until retirement because they love that pension, but rarely do we see sometimes, um, the enthusiasm to produce well for the city. This gives the city manager, uh, the ability to weed out employees that are just coddling, uh, the government time clock. And the biggest thing is what makes you think, for every hire, we have to promote up from the bottom? We can always hire from outside, and I don't think we'd have any problem hiring from the outside with a lot of these positions. So, for any employee that is current right now, that doesn't feel comfortable with this clause, please don't apply, but for the ones that have applied that are currently sitting in these positions, pretty much everybody to my left, they're some of our top employees that we have, and they hustle every day, and they do a lot, and they get a lot of projects done, as you guys are seeing all over the city, because they're giving it their all. Last we want is lazy employees. So, yeah, I'm in favor of this all day long.
Councilmember, anyone? Lambert?
You know, I'm just gonna make a, I'm just kinda curious, and, and I, maybe I just, but I remember we talked about this about little over a year ago, maybe a year and a half. Ms. Lewis, you was for doing away with that at-will, so I just been curious why now you're changing.
What?
Against that at-will.
That's what?
I mean, uh, for that at-will, uh, so, you know, really getting away from it. I, I remember discussing in the back, but that's all I wanted to say, so.
All right. So, Councilmember, we're going, do you have anything? So, uh, I will tell you why I'm in support of this. Um, we have lacked a succession plan in our city. We saw it when our fire department was ran by a police commander. Um, we need to create a culture of leaders, and again, in the private sector, everyone's at-will. For those business owners at home, you're all at-will, right? We have to get up in the morning, put food on our tables. So, I've been an employee with the city, uh, since January fourteenth, two thousand and three, and, you know, for lack of a better terms, we've heard the, the statement, you know, the good old boy system. That's one of the reasons I ran. I don't want the next person up, I want the best person up, and so, when I hear if people are afraid to, you know, commit or promote and wanna be a true leader in a position that says that, you know, the two words "at-will," then yeah, you're probably not the person that should apply for that position. We desperately need leadership, and that's what we're seeking for. Um, and again, a succession plan, that leadership shouldn't just be the department head, right? It needs to be mid-management level people. We need to build the future of the city, uh, and again, we saw it with, with the fire department. I do appreciate, you know, members of the fire department reaching out to me, and we've had a great discussion on this of, of what my opinion is of it. Um, and again, I am, I'm wholeheartedly for leadership positions in this because, again, we have to create an expectation. We pay our department heads, you know, quite a bit of money, and the public has an expectation, you're not just gonna get that position and watch paint dry, right? You're gonna be the tip of the spear, you're gonna be the leader in that position, uh, and there needs to be accountability. So, I know, you know, some people are afraid of the term "at-will," when I hear "at-will," I just hear constant accountability, that's, that's how I define it, so, uh, so I, I am, I am for, for the mid-management, management-level positions. Any other?
Do we do a motion on it? Now, will we, will we all try to go through all of them?
Yeah, we'll go through all of them, and then do a, do them individually, individual vote. Uh, the next item was G, and this is Community and Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
I just have a question, she doesn't have to.
Oh, sorry.
Um, our economic development director doesn't have to go through the whole report. My question is, um, because this, this is a, a one-pocket situation here to, uh, bring water to a development, um, my concern is that as we move forward with this developer, are, are there gonna be other little pockets of developments going on for water, 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 or will it move forward to a Lafco situation where there has to be a plan for the rest of the property and not just kinda pick it apart?
Sure, in this particular, um, instance, it is a unique situation in that the adjacent property is already being served by city water, um, which is just outside of the city limits. Um, so in this unique situation, there would only be, uh, ranchettes that would be, um, within that, with, between the city limits and this proposed development. Um, there is a water main, there is a water well, um, it's essentially on this property that is, uh, requesting an out-of-boundary service agreement, and there's a water main, um, that is adjacent to this property. Um, at this time, it does not make sense to annex this property as there is no sewer service in the immediate vicinity, that would take some, um, work to extend, um, city services, so it does make sense just to leave it outside and then extend water services as it's adjacent to water, but it is a unique situation in that this pocket, um, is adjacent to a u, to a development that already has city water, um, and it would not be set a precedent for the little ranchettes as there's no future development there proposed.
My biggest concern is, as, uh, for the prop, the, um, property which is being formed now, as you move forward, uh, north on the property, that we don't have this pocket-type construction continuing to come forward to the city of Los Manos for water.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that, that's my main concern, um, because we're not, you know, the, the state of California hasn't declared that we're out of a, a drought situation, so I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're being careful about allocating water and that we're not having pocket development.
Absolutely, understood.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item I. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jones?
Luckily, this is a storage facility, doesn't have that many bathrooms or showers, so it should be fairly minimal on the water usage.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item I, and for this one, uh, Councilmember Lewis, if you have questions, I will, uh, I will take your questions because, uh, this decision, again, was made at the MCAG level.
Yes, I, I don't have any questions, but I do have a statement, and I'm just gonna say that I'm very saddened that, uh, this once-approved project is not being moved forward by this council, however, I'm very pleased that, uh, to say that MCJ, MCAG is picking up this project, um, to see that it is moved forward for our junior college and for the residents and for the use of our community. Um, this was a, a project that was promised to the community, and MCAG is gonna help this to be realized, to have this bike-walking path to our junior college area, and so I wanna thank MCAG for picking it up and driving it and moving it forward, and that's it, Mr. Mayor, on that one.
So I will absolutely share why, uh, I think this project needs to stop exactly where it is. So, being a police officer for twenty years, I have obviously responded to car crashes. Badger Flat in Pacheco is by far the most dangerous section of road that we have in the city, we've had multiple vehicle versus pedestrians, we've had deaths there, people have died at that intersection, people have died trying to crossing the street to get to Walmart. So to have a funded project that's gonna not only encourage but promote people to walk on that is extremely dangerous. Also, the MCAG organization has the bus program, and students in college can ride that bus for free, so they have a free ride now, so I don't know of any, anyone who would rather walk one point nine miles to and from Merced College on the most dangerous stretch of road that we have versus ride an air-conditioned bus for free. I also was not in agreement that the city pick up a two-point million, two-point-three, two-point-four million-dollar tab, uh, for this project, and again, it takes place in the most dangerous part of the city. Adding a forty-foot section of asphalt to the most dangerous highway that we have in the area isn't gonna help anything, it's not gonna, it's not gonna make anything better. So that, that was my reasoning behind it, um, as far as this position. I also feel that we have other things in the city that are much higher priority. Why Vineyard doesn't connect to Mercy Springs, and taking that, those funds and connecting a street that people need to desperately get to to get to their own neighborhood, to me makes a hundred times more sense, uh, than promoting people using a, a bike path or a walking trail in the most dangerous section of our city. Um, and so that was, that was the reason, again, behind it. Um, and again, going back to whatever was, was promised, you know, in, in twenty seventeen, I do notice that in the feasibility study that neither the California Highway Patrol nor Los Manos PD's Traffic Division was consulted, uh, when they did this, and so again, that was another big concern for me, is the public safety aspect. I would not and will not let my kid walk on that, and so, again, that's my opinion. Moving on to item N.
So I know some elected officials say they're good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. Well, if you do the math, for probably about the five students that would take that walking trail and use it on a regular basis, it'd be much cheaper and less expensive for MCAG to Uber them back and forth every day than to pay for this project and maintain it on an annual basis. So, it's, uh, it's gonna be very taxing to the taxpayer if it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, did you have anything, or is that all? Is that? Okay.
Turn it on for the next item.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to, to item N.
Okay, um, the reason I asked this to be pulled because I, I can't, I don't understand the maps that are on here, so I'm hoping that, um, uh, there could be an overhead or maybe an explanation, because it's not, I don't, I can't make the connection, so. It's, it's really, the print is not, you know, legitimate enough for me to read. I just wanna know how it relates to what's being asked for with these maps that are presented on page two forty-three.
Sure, so, um, simply it is encroaching in the city right-of-way at the, at its furthest peak because it's a, it's a platform that is, uh, domed or, um, has curvature to it. Um, so at its furthest point, it's five feet, two inches, encroaching into the city right-of-way, um, and there is still ample clearance for handicap accessibility, uh, within the public right-of-way around the platform.
Is this the encroachment that's already out there on the sidewalk that?
Yes.
This is about?
Yes, it is.
So that, uh, for the bottom map, um, on the right-hand side, that would be the little fan-shaped item that's on there?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so the diagram just above that, what does that pertain to?
Um, that is just the structure, the actual building footprint structure, uh, the platform is shown in the floor plan.
Okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, and that, that was the last item, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's do these, uh, individually, let's start with D. Do I have a motion to approve item D? Measure H Financial Committee.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve, uh, or accept the report for the Measure H, uh, Committee Financial Update as submitted.
All right, thank you, and a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, and can we do a roll call vote?
Lambert?
Yes.
Don't you?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes. All right. And let's move on to item E. Do I have a motion for item E? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to approve City Council Resolution Number six-six-seven-eight as submitted.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, uh, roll call vote?
Lambert?
Yes.
Don't you?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Jones?
Yes. All right. Sorry, gotta push some buttons here. Um, all right, item G, City Council Resolution six-six-eight-zero. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number six-six-eight-zero as read.
And? And do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
Second that.
All right, roll call vote again, please.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, and then moving on to item I, City Council Resolution Number 6682, to no longer pursue the Pacheco Boulevard Regional Path Project. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve City Council Resolution 6682 as read.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, and then item N, Resolution Number 6687. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6687 as submitted.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. And roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. And then do I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items, with the exception of item J? J, J isn't John. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda minus item J as submitted.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Okay. All right, moving on to item eight, Appointment of Members to the Improvement Standards and Specifications Technical Advisory Committee and Community Design Standards Technical Advisory Committee. And this is a 2-4, I guess? With Stacy and Neera?
Good evening, Mayor. This is just a follow-up from our August 2nd meetings. It's your, from Council Resolution 6676 and 6677s to essentially appoint two commissions to be allowed to assist staff in providing feedbacks on the development of the improvement standard as well as the community design standards.
All right, and so we'll start with, with my appointments to the commission. So I'm appointing Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Lambert. And then do you want me to read the? Oh, the Planning Commission? Okay. And then from the Planning Commission, the appointment of John Cates and Rob Robinson. All right, and then we'll move on to, oh, these are all part of them, I'm sorry. Okay. From, yeah, from the Tree Commission to join this advisory committee is gonna be Tom Calgen. From the Parks and Rec Commission is gonna be John Spivak. And the Traffic Safety Committee, Stacy and Neera. All right. Do I have a motion to confirm these appointments? Councilmember Begonia?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment. As submitted, as stated.
All right, do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Yep. All right, moving on to item nine, Appointment of Commissioner to the Tree Commission. This is for the appointment year, term, one, two-year term expiring December 31st, 2024. And so I'm requesting that Mary Accardo be appointed to the Tree Commission. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Motion approved, Mary Accardo to the Tree Commission.
All right, do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Moving on to item 10, Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternates for the 2023 League of California Cities LLC Annual Conference and Expo being held September 20th to the 22nd, 2023 in Sacramento, California. I will not be attending this. Who is, who is attending? Oh, okay, so, all right, so Councilmember Jones and Begonia are going. So I'm gonna give this to Councilmember Begonia. Just nod your head, just nod your head. There you go, you're all right. All right. And then moving on to, do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to, to appoint Councilmember Begonia as a voting member? Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make the motion.
All right, do I have a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, and so, so then, yeah, our alternate would be Councilmember Jones.
By default.
Okay, so if I get another, Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion to amend the first motion to, like, Councilmember Jones as ultimate.
All right, thank you.
And I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right. Gotta stick with the rules, gotta stick with the rules. All right. Moving on to item 11. Yes.
This should actually be just a separate motion, not amending the first motion, I think is what Mr. Lambert was.
A separate, correct, yeah, separate motion. Item 11, Cancellation of the Regular City Council Meeting Scheduled for Wednesday, September 20th, 2023 Due to Council Members Attending the League of California Cities Conference in Sacramento, California, September 20th to 22nd, 2023. And do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. And then moving on to item 12, Advisement of Public Notices. For this, we have four reports. We'll go to Community and Economic Development Director Souza Elms on her birthday. Happy birthday, Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first item is for El Pollo Loco. They're proposing a 2,400-square-foot commercial structure with a drive-through. This will be located in the Safe Mart Shopping Center on Mercy Springs Road. The second item is for a commercial storage container. This would be for a maximum of four containers to be located behind 508 I Street. They will be screened from the public right-of-way. The second, the third item, sorry, is for Galua LLC. This is off of Technology Road. This is to subdivide a parcel into 18 parcels. And this is Technology Drive and Ward Road for future industrial development. And then the last item is for 958 J Street. This is for Elizabeth Rogers, who's proposing to operate a cottage, cottage food operation out of her home. These public hearings will be held on Wednesday, September 13th, here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that. Move to item 13, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a couple announcements here. Salute to Seniors Event, September 29th. September 29th, Salute to Seniors Event. Police folks head on out there and this year's theme is space theme, right? So that's an exciting event coming up at our community center and tickets are on sale now, $12, if I'm not mistaken. Yep. $12 Salute to Seniors Event. The other one is Seventh Street Basketball Courts on September 16th. We'll be hosting a, an event out there in collaboration with our partnership with the school district. It's at 6:00 PM. It's the Seventh Street Basketball Courts. Those courts are on the corner of Pacheco and Seventh Street where the overpass is at. Court's right there on the side, right next to LBE. So we're real excited about that and our partnership with the school district on those events. So love to see you folks out there in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So let's move on to item 14, Report Update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCHG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE Measure V Committee, and the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and the Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvements. And so we'll start with Councilmember Lewis. If you have anything on the San Joaquin Valley Air Control?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Lewis, or Jones, do you have anything on?
I do. So I don't know if people have noticed, but there's quite a few more garbage cans downtown. The Los Banas Downtown Association partnered with the city of Los Banas to provide quite a few more trash receptacles downtown. I think they've all gotten installed. So it's, it's gonna help out a lot with some of the overflow of garbage cans down there. So I'd like to thank the city for partnering with the Downtown Association for that. And then Downtown Association is having their annual Farm to Table event that's gonna be on September 22nd. There are still some tickets available, but they are selling fast. Tickets can be purchased at the Downtown Association in purchase or in person or on their website. And that is all.
All right, thank you for that. So nothing to report, MCHG's meeting has been canceled for this month. As far as Peninsula Clean Energy, I really want to appreciate, again, Sean showing up tonight, the CEO of that organization coming and meeting with, with me today and our city manager. Peninsula Clean Energy, I think one of the things that, that we talked about today was just the communication aspect of it. There is a big misconception that when you see a bill and now that you were PG&E and now we're PCE, that you're paying more money, and that's absolutely false. In fact, I'm encouraging people to contact PG&E directly and ask them who's giving you a better rate. The reality is it is PCE. Also, I learned today that besides the 9.65% rate decrease that you're getting compared to PG&E, if you are a CARES or FARA program-qualified individual, you receive an additional 20%. That is a huge discount. And so again, rather than kind of just take some information off social media and make a decision, we're just asking the public to do, do their due diligence and make an informed decision. Because the reality is Peninsula Clean Energy is cheaper than PG&E. And I know there were instances where people saw, you know, a rate increase from PG&E or they saw their gas bill go up, you know, at a certain seasonal time of the year, and they associated that with PCE's cost, and that's just not true. So the reality is they are cheaper. And so I was glad that we were able to, to have that discussion. And, and again, they communicated to us that we're now gonna do a campaign to, to get that communication out and get with the public more often on that. So that's all I have for, for PCE. City Council members, reports, start with Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, this evening, we had 11 items on the consent agenda that were very important issues and that the public could not address or redress or ask questions. With that said, we spent approximately $5,107, uh, 107, $7,775.42, minus the one item that was pulled off the agenda for the painting of the community center, which was $124,000. So tonight, we approved $4,983,775.42. That's a lot of money that the taxpayers spent tonight and didn't have a say on how it was spent or any questions that they can ask about how, how things came about to spend this money or any concerns that they may have had. This is the most I've ever seen in the 12 years I've been sitting up here of items that should have been on the regular agenda or an agenda item where the public could redress and ask questions, but everything's being put on the consent agenda so that you, the public, cannot ask questions and know what's going on. You have to come to the, to the lectern and make a statement and it doesn't answer your question. So it's, it's very disappointing to me. I, I don't think that we're handling this correctly to be transparent to the public about how we're spending our money and allowing the public to have a say. It's your tax dollars that we're spending. And it's only appropriate that you should be able to redress the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
You know, Mr. Mayor? I, you know, I guess they received the agenda the same time we did on Friday online when they look at it. Our public forum is for them to, you know, open up about this, the items that are on here. If I'm correct, are these items, if they were actually on the agenda, open to public for, for comment? But that's where they speak at public forum, then we take that into consideration. They spoke, Ms. Lewis pulled the ones off, and we discussed. So, I mean, whether it's on the consent or the regular agenda, I think we got the story across. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Begonia? All right. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Slight correction on the Downtown Association Farm to Table Event. I've been told that I said the date wrong. It is September 21st. We'll be at the, our plaza downtown. Also, Ms. Lewis, you had the opportunity to pull item K, which is the repaving of Burt Street, but that one is right next door to where you live. And we all know you need four-wheel drive to get down that. And I don't think anybody in the city would have a problem with us paving that because that's one of the worst roads in the city. And we just got done paving Cardoza, and it would've been nice if you would've congratulated or thanked staff for their hard work in getting that done, but it seems like you only talk about things that try to self-promote yourself there, and it's just getting old. I don't think anybody's believing you. You got a small crowd of followers and that's it, but people are seeing through this. So you're mad about the money we're spending? I'm mad that we didn't spend it years prior and that we're dealing with it now instead of addressing an animal shelter or homeless shelter or other much-needed things. So that is all.
All right, thank you. So I guess I'm going last. So I just wanted to share a couple of things, and it's gonna start with the hard work that our city staff do. Let's talk about paved roads. San Luis, B Street, Overland, and Badger Flat are all now paved. And tonight, we approved Burch and G to be added to the list. And so again, thank you, Neera, for all your efforts with that. Talking about streets, the, the accomplishments that just happened in the month of August, delivered and laid 10,100 tons of asphalt in the city, replaced 37 ADA curb ramps that were not up to code that needed to be, that were required to be replaced, pulverized and repaired structural base of 170,000 square feet of road, installed 3,000 linear feet of new shoulder backing material, and fully rehabilitated two center lane miles of road in the city in a 30-day period. So again, I applaud you, Neera, for your efforts. Your team is absolutely amazing. I also want to share that, you know, in regards to the shelter, the two, and again, thank you for, for meeting with me on Friday. The shelter employees, the additional staff, doubling the staff, are currently in the hiring process, I understand. I also want to thank Commander Reyna and his efforts because now our animal shelter partnered with Petco to do pet adoption and possible grant awards, and so that's, that's never been done before, so thank you for that. Information and transparency. So one of the things that you will find if you open your water bill, whether you get one online or, or on paper like I do, I'm old school, on the back of your water bill, you'll find a QR code. If you open your smartphone, pull out your camera and go to that QR code, you'll see all the city projects that are currently being done or have been completed. And so everyone has that information available to them, to them. So you don't have to, we don't have to be friends on Facebook. Everybody can just open that, that page and go to that themselves. In the time, again, that this agenda was put out, I met with 13 people in our city. And again, people had great questions, and I felt it was my job to try to answer those questions as best I could. And if I didn't know something, I told you I didn't know. And so again, some people like to hear that, maybe they don't. I don't know, but the truth is the truth. So again, I just want to thank the public for continuing to come forward. So if anybody feels that your questions are not being answered, you're sure not reaching out to me, and so I would encourage you to do that. I was really fortunate off on Labor Day that my nine-year-old son, Jack, and I got to go around and deliver pizza to our, our employees that were working on Labor Day. So again, thank you to police, fire, dispatch, and our CSOs, and so hopefully you like the pizza. And then on 9/16, again, our city manager brought it up, but yeah, come out and shoot basketball with me on 7th and Pacheco. You don't believe it, but I'm actually pretty good. So I know Joe, Joe there is gonna test me on a three-point contest. But yeah, come out and, and again, enjoy our, our basketball court. We hope, look forward to seeing you. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, meeting adjourned 7:25.